The time is now seven oh six and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the final regular board meeting of two thousand eighteen nineteen for the Indian Prairie School District two oh four Board of Education on the date Monday, April twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Razak?
Here.
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
We are all here. Ms. Donahue, will you lead us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several board salutes today. I'm going to ask Ms. Grover to start us.
The board salutes two District two oh four high school seniors who were recently named the two thousand nineteen National Merit Corporate Scholars by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. The scholars are Mihir Rao from Wabonzi Valley and Eric Xu from Niqwa Valley. These scholars were chosen from more than fifteen thousand finalists and selected by college admissions officers and high school counselors who reviewed a substantial amount of information submitted by both the finalists and their high schools. Congratulations to Mihir and Eric on their selection for this prestigious award.
Thank you. Mr. Rising?
Absolutely. The Naperville Daughters of the American Revolution Chapter recently held its awards ceremony, which include honoring students for outstanding work in American history. Matia Valley Senior Samantha Pittman won the Vera Walls Education Scholarship. In addition, this year honorees for the Good Citizen Award include Laura Kluge, my neighbor, from Matia Valley, and Adam Schneider from Niqwa Valley. To receive this award, high school seniors must demonstrate qualities of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. Jonathan Truhoft, an eighth grader from Fisher Middle School, was also recognized for his outstanding studies in American history. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. I think Ms. Donahue?
The board salutes Niqwa Valley Junior Arnav Bedai, who recently received Governor J.B. Pritzker's two thousand nineteen Volunteer Service Award. Arnav started powermines.org, a nonprofit organization that provides free online tutoring and free homework help with the intent of enabling deserving youth and adults to achieve their educational goals. Since its launch around a year ago, Arnav has signed up more than a hundred volunteers to tutor online in a wide range of subjects. Numerous deserving kids have taken advantage and benefited from the tutoring services that powermines.org provides. Arnav is changing lives and enabling deserving kids who cannot afford tutoring services to succeed and excel in their studies. Congratulations, Arnav.
Thank you. And Ms. Demming?
Step student to receive community award. The board salutes step student Jackson Mayer, who will receive a Naperville Accessible Community Task Force Award at an upcoming Naperville City Council meeting. One student from the District two oh four Transition Program was chosen for this award. Jackson was selected for the attitude he fosters in respecting and valuing people with disabilities. Jackson will receive his award from the mayor and city council members on May seventh. Congratulations, Jackson.
Great, thank you. Now we move to our student representative report. Today, it's from Wabonzi Valley High School. We have Sam Jordan with us. Hey, Sam, how you doing? So, Sam, are you a senior?
Yes, I am.
And what are your plans after graduation?
I'm going to the Ohio State University next, or in the fall, to study accounting. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your service to us, too.
Yeah, no problem. I'm happy to do it.
I'll let you go.
So, in athletics, the Booster Club will be hosting its annual golf outing on Tuesday, June fourth, at the White Eagle Country Club. Boys Track, Boys Track's annual red ribbon track meet was a success over the weekend. Boys tennis were the champions at the Schaumburg Invite on Saturday, April thirteenth. Girls soccer were the champions of the Plainfield North Invite. And then in activities, this past weekend, we saw amazing attendance at our spring musical, The Wedding Singer. There were over a hundred ten students involved in the show, so big shout out to the cast, crew, and amazing directors. The competition season for clubs and activities has been in full effect since March. BPA Nationals sends over forty students to Anaheim this Wednesday. FCC LA had twenty-one state participants, many of them placing, and overall, Wabonzi will be sending over a hundred fifty students to state and national competitions. May thirteenth and fourteenth saw four hundred forty-five seniors participate in the senior celebration event, which is one of the biggest, most memorable events of their high school career. Over a hundred fifty parents come together to provide this experience, and the seniors report having had a wonderful time, and I personally can say that that is true. In academics, AP testing begins on May sixth, where Wabonzi will have over six hundred students taking over a thousand exams during the college board prescribed testing times. Recently, Wabonzi's Aurora School Resource Officer, Nick Gardner, was recognized today, April twenty-ninth, with the Medal of Valor by the APD for his actions of courage involving the Henry Pratt mass shooting incident. The Illinois School Health Association recently recognized Millie Shepich, a health teacher at Wabonzi Valley for thirty-three years, who is retiring this year with the Lifetime Achievement Award. This award is extra special, as Wabonzi Valley recently received the Blue Ribbon Award for Health Education. On upcoming events, Young Hearts for Life will be scanning our warriors this Thursday, May second. At current, we have seventeen hundred students signed up, and we're looking to beat our current top total of nineteen hundred eleven students scanned. The green and gold ceremony takes place on May eighth at seven PM. We invite all board members to attend if it fits your schedule. Close to seventy-five senior students will be recognized with departmental awards and community scholarships. Senior brunch and becca laureate happen on May twenty-second. Brunch is at Two Brothers Roundhouse, and it's our seniors' last opportunity to get together as a class. And becca laureate happens at seven PM in the Wabonzi Valley Auditorium on the twenty-second, and we invite the board to join us to that as well if your schedule permits. And, as this is my last report of the school year, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to represent the original valley and say one last, once a warrior, always a warrior. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Step. Thanks, Mr. Step. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We ask those that are addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. We have four speakers to non-agenda items. The first is Michelle Metry.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Michelle Metry, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our District two oh four lacrosse community and families, both boys and girls teams, many of whom could not join us tonight as they're currently competing in lacrosse contests around the year. Well, some of them are. Those that are playing on turf are still playing. I came to this forum two years ago to request support for the district for the funding of the fast-growing sport of boys and girls lacrosse. I would like to start by expressing my most sincere gratitude for your collaboration with the athletics community, and more specifically the lacrosse community, in bringing lacrosse into our district. We appreciate that you and many members of the administration heard from and listened to our parents, community members, and student athletes during the open forums last time, and that you approved lacrosse as an interscholastic sport. At that time, the lacrosse advocacy community, parents and athletes, offered to collaborate with a two-year parent funding plan, as we all saw the value in bringing forward this incredible sport. In addition, back in May two thousand seventeen, the board agreed to reevaluate the parent funding model at the end of the two years. We respectfully ask of the board that after having parent funding of the startup cost for the sport for the first two years, the board now moved to recommend or consider approval of transition to a school-funded sport ongoing. Over the past two years, and specifically this year, we thank you most sincerely for affording thirty-one Niqwa Valley girls, fifty Niqwa Valley boys, thirty-five Valley co-op boys, and forty-five, pardon me, forty-five Valley co-op girls the opportunity to play this season. However, we've lost many interested athletes to the cost barrier. As an example, the girls' lacrosse program at Niqwa Valley this year conducted their player interest meeting earlier in the year, where we had fifty-one players attend. This was prior to the announcement of the annual cost of play. So, when the six hundred and ninety-dollar fee was announced for the girls this season, we immediately lost twenty players, twenty interested players, as it was just too expensive for them to play. We ended with thirty-one players. Similarly, our peers at Valley Co-op spoke here earlier, I believe, this year regarding the inequity in funding of the sport and hence the loss of additional players. Niqwa Valley girls has two subs in their varsity team compared to thirteen at Naperville North and nine or ten at Naperville Central. So, when we play, we're playing on fairly thin ice, because our sidelines don't have very many extra girls to play. As you have all, as you all have seen over the past several years, we very strongly believe in supporting our children in their desire to participate in lacrosse and to represent and play for their school. The lacrosse community is coming forward now to request that lacrosse athletes within the district, within District two oh four, receive school funding going forward and receive equal treatment as athletes representing the district. We believe that the sport could continue to grow even stronger if the funding model were more equitable. On behalf of all the families that will be impacted by your impending decisions, as you thoughtfully discuss and consider the forthcoming year, we, the lacrosse community, again thank you for your time, for the time you have taken and the time you will take to thoughtfully discern, equitably funding lacrosse within the district. Thank you.
Next speaker is Derek Harmer. Welcome.
The wearing of this attire was because I thought I had a game tonight at seven. It had nothing to do with what I'm about to talk about tonight. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Derek Harmer, and I'm currently a parent of three boys, and all three boys play lacrosse. I have two in the program now at Niqwa Valley, and I have another one who graduated in two thousand seventeen. It's, to say that it's become cultural to our family is an understatement. I was a football coach for many years, and soccer coach, and done all the things that parents do with their children, right? And we were roaming along, and all of a sudden my son came home from school one day and said, hey, Dad, it was the fourth grade, how about this sport where I get to run around chasing people with a stick? And I said, well, let's do that, right? That sounds like fun, right? So, a little anecdotal history about the sport, how it kind of took hold in our family. So, I've been involved with the lacrosse community here in Naperville since two thousand twelve, we moved here, and I've been on the lacrosse board as a volunteer board member, and predominantly been in charge of fields and scheduling, and watching this kind of evolve over the last couple of years and how we were not a, not a school-recognized sport at one time, and now we are. And we thank you for your support of that, of that part of our mission. And secondarily, kind of watching as this has rolled itself out, watching player interest and family interest in the sport, and being disappointed that I've heard on multiple occasions to Michelle's point, families of freshman athletes that are coming into school wanting to try this as a new sport, similarly to Michelle's earlier, earlier example, when they see the cost of getting into the sport, if you've not played it before and you're not accustomed to club fees and kind of doing that sort of, it's not part of your family, coming in and having that be your, your entry fee into the sport or something you might want to try is terribly discouraging. I remember when I was a young man, much younger than I am today, I went and told my parents I wanted to try wrestling. And I was a freshman, and I said, I want to try wrestling. And they said, how much is it to do? And I said, well, I got to go get a singlet, I got to get some shoes, get this and that, and I want to try it. And I asked my mother, and I said, Mom, if I would have told you it would have cost five times or four to five times as much as the normal fee for trying wrestling, what would you have said? She would, you weren't going to wrestle, right? And so, as I see our program now, you know, we had eighty-some kids in our, in our men's program for the last couple of years. We've gone down to seventy, now we're down to, now we're down to just fifty-three. And, and you hear from, and we go, and I go to every parent meeting. We start the parent meetings, every introductory meeting every year, as a board member and as a concerned parent. And I see kids, new kids, new fresh faces that are going to be refreshing the team, you know, in the, in the coming years. And to see those numbers falling off, and one of the predominant reasons why is because the cost of entry, is disappointing. And so, we didn't even have a freshman team this year as part of our boys' program. We had, we had to take our numbers and combine them to both the JV and varsity program. So, it's impacting the growth of the sport, like Michelle had mentioned. It's a fast-growing sport. I think it's one of the few sports the last five years that's had double-digit growth every year, and that was a statistic reported by the Sports and Goods Manufacturers of America. So, I'll end with this. It, nothing like playing for your high school, nothing like being able to try new things as a, as a young student, a young student athlete. And we would, we would ask to, to respectfully request our, respectfully request that you consider expediting our equal treatment for lacrosse in the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, I'm going to try to do this right, Lauren Charbonneisi?
Lauren Charbonne.
Okay. It's my sixty-seven-year-old eyes.
And it's a tough name, too. My name is Lauren Charbonneau. I, I'm a parent here in the district. And as Derek said, I've got a son who plays lacrosse at Niqwa Valley High School, and I've been a coach. I've coached soccer, I've coached baseball, I've coached, you know, basketball. And like, like Derek's son, he came to me one day and said, I want to play lacrosse. And I said, what's lacrosse? I kind of knew what it was, but I wanted him to explain it to me. And it was the one thing that he became passionate about, you know, right away. And not only did he take it seriously, but because there's this correlation between lacrosse and highly academic success, his grades went up, and I felt like that was a real positive influence on him. As both Michelle and Derek said, why we're here, we're really here to expedite the equal treatment of lacrosse in District two oh four. The parent-funded program, as you all know, was a two-year program, and we are ready now to be part of this school district and part of that whole community that, without the parent-funded program. Lacrosse is the fastest-growing sport in America. This is, it's the, it's time now to be part of that program. Otherwise, we're going to really miss that, that boat. We're really going to miss the, the opportunity to continue to grow the sport in this particular area. District two oh three approved that sport two or three years ago. I'm not quite sure of the facts. And they've, they've done a nice job of continuing to grow that sport in that particular area. You know, this coming summer, a professional lacrosse league is, has put together a, a deal with NBC to televise the sports. This past weekend, a high school showcase tournament was on ESPN. This sport is growing exponentially, and we really need to take it upon ourselves to allow District two oh four to fund this program moving forward. You know, we're losing players. We don't want to do that. And it's, it's, it's something that a lot of us feel very passionate about, and I really strongly suggest that we, we consider this as, as part of our plan moving forward. You know, I have a twelve-year-old boy. He likes lacrosse, but he's not passionate about it. But, fast forward two, three, four years, he's a freshman. All of a sudden, he's like, Dad, I want to try lacrosse. If it's, if it's not school-funded, I may not let him do that, just out of principle. It's, it's time. It's really time to do it. Again, we really encourage the expedite of the equal treatment of lacrosse. Thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker, Dave Wentz. Hi, Dave.
Dr. Sullivan?
President Razak? My name is David Wentz. Thank you for listening to all of us tonight. Two years ago, I stood here with several other concerned parents and a number of players in, in the audience, and passionately requested that we would be recognized as a state school, or as a, as a school sport through, through your decision. As part of that opportunity, we also had an agreement in place. We signed a pledge. We signed a pledge that for the two-years time period, we would pay all in. We had a lot of parents who said, that's a bitter pill for us to swallow. We didn't want to take that time. There was a lot of, a lot of parents who really took that as a, as a tough opportunity. What we learned the first year was, was the, and I'll say by background, my, my son Zach plays at Matia Valley, Wabonzi Valley Combined School. We found out the first year that we lost five players that were, were going to be signing up for Matia and Wabonzi that did not participate. This year, there were seven players that did not have, didn't have the funds. So, in order to help those other parents along, we actually developed a GoFundMe account. We had to pay eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. And there was some question about disparity. I want to talk about a couple of disparities. One is a disparity in, in the pricing. If, one of the things I've been doing for the last year or two, as we would go to games, talking to parents of other teams, ask them, one is your school recognizing this as an I-ty sport, and what do you pay? A week ago, last Tuesday or Wednesday, I believe it was, we were at Naperville North High School, and my jaw dropped when I was talking to some of the parents there. And I told them that we paid eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, and their fee was ninety-five dollars a player. And then I took photographs, and I can send them to, of the sidelines. They had eighteen extra players on the sidelines. We had eight. We only lost eleven to seven. But what's happened last year, and is happening this year, through different schedules, injuries, attrition, we're losing momentum because we don't have the fully competitive team we want. I think the other thing we might see is having an opportunity at the next meeting for this board to decide whether they want to follow a recommendation from one individual, or if you want to vote on a special motion of your own to ask for full funding for the equal treatment of, of all two oh four athletes. My understanding is, is the, the fee itself has not changed amongst all the other schools, all the other sports in the last five or six years. But we had a two-year pledge. Our, our concern also goes beyond the college. It goes into scholarships. I think you also should know that there are several players who are now playing at Overland University in Ohio, who are scholarship players because of the opportunity to play in lacrosse. I think that speaks well beyond just what happens while they're in high school. But again, I want to thank you for your consideration, and we're asking for, for it to be funded now rather than anything over a certain number of years. I think the time is to do it now.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. I'm going to begin with Dr. Sullivan.
Okay, I'm going to mention something Sam mentioned when he was up here, but our last Young Hearts for Life screening is at Wabonzi Valley this Thursday, May second, and there's still time to sign up, to volunteer. I think we're still needing some volunteers, right, Jason? Yes? So, again, we want to thank the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for supporting this life-saving program for our students. And you can find more information about Thursday screenings and how to volunteer on our website. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, May sixth through May tenth. And while I know we value and appreciate our teachers every day of the year, this is a special week to recognize our teachers for their incredible contributions. So, we have a very talented staff here at Indian Prairie that deserve high accolades for what they do every day for our students. So, I want to say thank you to the amazing teachers that we have here in the district, and I hope that all of you next week find time to thank a teacher. We have two administrative replacement positions tonight on the agenda, so I'm ready to go to those. Mike, both of our assistant director positions for Student Services. So, I'm going to ask Caitlin. I know Caitlin is here, so I'm going to have, the first is Caitlin Druger. Did I do that right, Caitlin? All right, good. Caitlin comes to us from District U forty-six, where she serves as a divisional of Special Education at Elgin High School currently. She's also been a Student Services Coordinator and Special Education Teacher with Joliet Public Schools. We look forward to welcoming Caitlin to Indian Prairie. I respectfully ask that you approve Caitlin Druger as Assistant Director of Student Services.
So, I do need a motion that we approve Caitlin as Assistant Director for Student Services.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve Caitlin Druger as Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
You have a motion, a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Welcome.
Congratulations, welcome. That isn't your, your fan club there, is it? Next to you? No, but you have a nice little fan, little one back there. And I don't think Amy's here, is that correct? Okay. So, our next, we have is Amy Galvin. Amy comes to us from Rockford Public Schools, where she was most recently, she most recently served as Director of Special Education. She's been in Rockford in Special Education administrative roles since two thousand fourteen. Amy has eight years of experience as a Special Education teacher, and we look forward to welcoming Amy to Indian Prairie. So, I respectfully ask for you to approve Amy Galvin as Assistant Director of Student Services.
And I need a motion to approve Amy as Assistant Director.
I'll move that the Board of Education approve Amy, Amy Galvin as Assistant Director of Student Services as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Anything else?
Yep, that's it.
That is it. So, now we move to the consent agenda items. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items F through J.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items F through J as presented.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes with a couple of uh-ohs. I like those. Okay, and now we go to our discussion, the review of the results, the official canvassing of the returns from DuPage County Election Commission. Are you doing that?
I am doing this.
Thank you.
So, in, in your board documents, you'll see that we've received from the DuPage County Clerk, the correct copy of the canvas and abstracts of votes cast at the Consolidated General Election that was held on Tuesday, April second. DuPage County is our principal county, so this canvas includes votes made in both DuPage and Will County. There's no action that needs to be taken on this, but we are supposed to review those results. So, I'll go through them in ballot order. The results were Gotham G.B. Batia, three thousand two hundred and forty votes, Justin Carubus, four thousand eight hundred and fifty-two votes, Mark Rising, five thousand eight hundred and four votes, Natasha Grover, five thousand nine hundred and fifteen votes, and Carol M. Jones, four thousand three hundred and seventy-seven votes. The results of that canvas puts our top three as our returning board members, Justin Carubus, Mark Rising, and Natasha Grover.
Thank you. And before moving to the approval of the President Pro Tem for our next short meeting, I have a few just information items. Last thing before I give up the chair here. For the community, we submitted requests for proposals to six nationwide superintendent search firms. The due date to receive them was Friday. We received proposals from all six search firms. So, now the board is in the process of reviewing the information on the search firms with the hope of having a selection of the search firm by June second. So, I want to just make sure the community knows where we're at in the process, and that's that. A reminder to all board members that A reminder to all board members that the IASB, Illinois Association of School Board, looks for resolutions, um, and that due date is in June, I think late June. I think some people are considering doing a resolution. I just want to make sure Dr. Sullivan provided us with a reminder. I just want to continue to remind us that if we're going to submit, we should get working on that. Went to a Lend meeting on Friday, and my friend left, and I want to give him kudos. One of the highlights of the Lend meeting was to look at, which is the Legislative Education Network of DuPage, and that's a group of DuPage school districts who work for advocacy for schools throughout the state of Illinois. You have to pay a fee to belong to Lend, and several school districts thought it was time to relook at the fee structure. And, uh, our friend there, Jay String, was one of the members who worked with other business managers in DuPage to relook at a fee structure, which will benefit actually District 204. So that will be voted upon at the May Lend meeting, and then I'm sure will be presented to the board for our approval later on. But they did magnificent work that I think can be shared later, but we need to follow the process here. And finally, with Teacher Appreciation Week, I know on behalf of the entire board, want to thank our teachers. I'm kind of passionate about this because that's what I decided to do when I grew up, was to be a teacher. And, uh, continues to be a difficult profession, and it's getting tougher and tougher. As we know, there are teacher shortages throughout the United States, clearly teacher shortages in the state of Illinois. And I guess I do have a plea, and Dr. Sullivan said it, thank a teacher next week. Believe it or not, in about my thirty-eight-year career, you get about three thank yous a year. And you think you would get more, and I know parents love their teachers, and they probably think somebody else is doing it. Guess what I'm telling you? They don't. And the highlight of my year was getting that thank you. It's serving kids, but that thank you was really, really important. So if you can find some time, and there's a lot of kids out here. So before you go, before you leave here, make sure that next week, pick two or three teachers, you can pick all of them, but pick two or three teachers, and just go up to them and say thanks for what you do, because you know they're really passionate about what they do, and, and they want to serve you well. So please do that, and parent community, please do that also. On behalf of the board, I want to thank all the teachers, teachers assistants, everybody who works with our kids. We do appreciate what you do, so thank you. That was a good way to end. And now I have an action item. I need approval to appoint President Pro Tem for the special organizational meeting until a new president is elected. And so do I have a motion to approve a President Pro Tem?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Kathy Peel as the President Pro Tem for the special organizational meeting until a new board president is elected as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion about Kathy Peel's merits here?
Sit ye out ten years, all of us, yeah?
I guess we don't.
Done the job before, haven't you?
Not as per, no. Well, I mean, I guess, maybe once.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh geez.
Really? In the midst of the motion. Motion passes.
You've got to switch chairs now.
You want to switch?
No. I'm going to take the hammer though. All right, so we're gonna...
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Motion to adjourn the final meeting? Did you make that? Second, oh, second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And now we need to call the special organizational meeting to order at 7:41. And, uh, Dr. Sullivan, you need to lead the reelected board members in the oath of office and indicate that all board members can participate.
Miss Horvath need a moment?
Ms. Horvath is desperately trying to get to the next meeting.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Take a pause there, speed racer.
Oh, more in slow-mo.
Okay. I'm there.
I am going to come up here and administer the oath of office to the newly elected members of the Board of Education, but current board members, it's kind of been a tradition that we would like you to reaffirm your oath to join us. I'm going to ask folks to stand who wish to do that. And you all have it in front of you, so you might want to hold on to that, because it's, as, as Justin has indicated, and several times, it's quite long. Okay, so we'll start, and we'll have you repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the School Board of Indian Prairie Community Unit School District 204 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Indian Prairie District 204. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance the vision for Indian Prairie District 204. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Now take a drink of water. Congratulations.
You want my password?
Congratulations to the, uh, reelected officials.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Jackie, will you do the roll call? He forgets very quickly.
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
Mr. Rayzak?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
There's no public comment, right?
No, there was no one signed up for special, sorry.
Okay, there was no public comment. So now I am going to need nominations for president.
I'm going for Michael Rayzak to be president of the Indian Prairie School Board 204.
Second.
Second.
Didn't need a second, but that's okay. So we've got Mike Rayzak as a nomination for president. Where, where's my notes here?
Any other nominations?
Do we ask for any, okay.
Any other nominations?
Should we wait? How long do we want to wait?
You just do it three times.
Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations?
Okay. Can we do, do a roll call vote? That's, Jackie, can you do a roll call vote?
It's on the main table.
Sorry, just a second. I have to make the machine do what I want it to here. Okay. Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye.
The vote is in favor, seven to zero, in favor of Mike Rayzak. By receiving a majority of the votes, Mike Rayzak is elected president of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Actually, thank you. Thank you, guys. I appreciate the support. I think anyone on this board could serve as president. So it's a high honor to be recognized, you, to serve you, so thank you so much. So we'll move for the nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice President. Do I have someone who would like to nominate someone for Vice President?
I'll nominate Justin Carubus for Vice President.
So, Justin Carubus is nominated for Vice President. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for Vice President are closed. So Justin Carubus being the only candidate nominated for the Office of Vice President. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
So the vote is seven to zero in favor of Justin Carubus. By receiving the majority of votes, Justin Carubus is elected Vice President of the Board of Education. Congratulations, Mr. Carubus.
Thank you. I look forward to supporting the president and him delegating a lot of responsibilities to his fellow board members.
I look forward to that, too.
You can't do it. You just, just...
Thank you. So nominations are now in order for the Office of Secretary. Do we have a nomination for the Office of Secretary?
I nominate Lori Donahue as Secretary.
So Lori Donahue is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Secretary? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for the Office of Secretary is now closed. Lori Donahue being the only candidate nominated for the Office of Secretary. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
The vote is seven to zero in favor of Lori Donahue. By receiving a majority of votes, Lori Donahue is elected Secretary of the Board of Education. Congratulations, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you very much.
Good stuff.
So during this meeting, we also make an appointment, and I think I got, I need a motion and a second for this, and the appointment is for the Illinois Association of School Boards Governing Board Representative. That person represents us at the Illinois Association of School Board meetings and helps us with our resolutions. So do I have a motion to appoint a member of the School Board to IASB's governing board representative?
Make a motion for Mark Rising to be appointed to IASB School Board, as their School Board Representative.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Next order of business is to adopt the Illinois Association of School Boards Code of Conduct for members of school boards. Traditionally, as we reorganize, we always adopt the Illinois Association School Boards Code of Conduct. In addition to that lengthy oath of office, we also have a code of conduct. And very briefly, I want to just, and it's available actually in our policy, which is two colon eight O, but some highlights of E, which is an exhibit. Thank you. Some highlights of this is that school board members represent district constituents honestly and equally, and try, surrender their responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups. School board members avoid any conflict of interest. School board members recognize that a school board member has no legal authority as an individual, and decisions only can be made by a majority vote. School board members take no private actions that compromise the board or administration, and they respect confidentiality of privileged information. School board members abide by majority decisions. School board members respect the free expression of opinion in an honest and open and respectful manner. School board members prepare, attend, and actively participate in school board meetings and be informed about them. School board members will respectfully listen to those who communicate with the board and try to understand their views by recognizing their responsibility to represent the interest of the entire community. School board members model continuous learning through school board member development opportunities, and school board members finally strive to keep the board focused on its primary work, and that is clarifying the district purpose, direction, and goals, and monitoring district performance. So those are the highlights of the oath of conduct and the code of conduct. Do we have a motion and a second? So can I have a motion and a second to approve those?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education adopt the Illinois Association of School Boards Code of Conduct for members of school boards as presented.
Second?
So I have a motion and a second. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
And Mr. Rayzak?
Aye. Motion passes.
Finally, the board needs to approve the 2019-2020 School Board Meeting Calendar. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 School Board Meeting Calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Has it been reviewed for Bears games?
It actually has. And I'm in trouble. Any other questions? Hearing none, Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Motion passes. Finally, I need a motion to reconvene into executive session.
Make a motion to reconvene into executive session.
Second.
Do I have to call the roll for that?
Yes.
Let's do that. Jackie, call the roll.
Yeah, hang on, I got to find it here.
Because now we're all out of order. Okay, Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzak?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes, students, and yes, the major part of the regular Board of Education meeting is now adjourned, and the board will go into executive session.
Good work, Pro Tem.
Congratulations, guys. You cut it close.